We should. I want.
And then our police department has it. Our department has it.
Do we have a master of this different? We can't use two. I'm not saying I should be.
Why don't you do it?
Uh, then they should delegate so simple. And then you sign off on it. So obviously it's not like it was. To me, that's too much.
In times like these, it's good to know there's a place where people know who you are, no matter how long you've been gone. A place where the smells of home cooking are still in the air. Where a simple wave warms your heart and sharing stories is just a way of life. It's good to be home. Agraria Insurance Company. Protecting what's important in life. Contact your local agraria insurance company agent.
The word cooperative means working together for a common purpose. At Actegro Cooperative, we are dedicated to supporting the success of our farmers and the health of our communities for generations to come. Rooted in our communities, Actegro strives to instill dedication, determination, and integrity in everything we do, and that includes inspiring the next generation of agricultural leaders.
Bolt Marketing Crop Insurance is locally owned and operated and has been assisting egg producers in South Dakota, Minnesota, and North Dakota for over 20 years. We not only stand behind our egg producers by helping them manage their risk through marketing and crop insurance, we also stand behind our youth and youth activities by coaching, volunteering, and reinvesting in our future leaders. We know how important it is to ensure the future for both our youth and our farmers. Bolt Marketing Crop Insurance is a proud sponsor of the Webster area Bearcats. Equal opportunity provider.
How you doing, Kevin?
Hmm. What's that?
Hi, Mike.
Yeah. Another one. Hmm. Yep. Man, this town has changed. Yeah. About damn time.
Dreamer, doer, difference maker. These are just a few things we look for when growing our team at Dakota Bank. Those with empathy and a commitment to doing what's right build their careers with us. If you're about relationships and helping others, Dakota Bank is calling. Will you answer? Go with integrity. Go with teamwork. Go with Dakota Bank.
Agriculture is like no other business, which makes Farm Credit Services of America like no other lender. Owned by the farmers and ranchers we serve, our customers have a voice in how we work, a stake in what we do, and share in our success. Discover a lender that works for you at Farm Credit Services of America.
Hi, my name is Shawna Meade. I'm owner of Fix-Cell Funeral Service in Webster. Death is never an easy time. When you experience the loss of a loved one, you can trust us to guide you through the arrangements necessary to create a meaningful ceremony that celebrates the unique life of being honored. Our staff is committed to providing your family with the highest quality care and service in your time of need. Fix-Cell Funeral Service in Webster is and always has been locally owned and operated, serving your family since 1924. Visit our website at fixcellfuneral.com.
Dave Haylor Automotive cares, and we're open and here to serve you, our loyal customers, with free pickup and delivery of your service vehicle, or if you're in the market for something new, we've got some great incentives from Chevrolet and Buick. Shop our classic car showroom, Highway 12 Classics. Visit our newly redesigned website, give us a call, shoot us an email or a text, whatever it takes. From our floor to your door, it's that easy. Dave Haylor Automotive, East Highway 12 in Webster, on the web, haylorauto.com.
Blast Wi-Fi Advanced Frontal Controls allows you to restrict internet content by category. Block specific web.
June high JV. We're in Langford.
See my team special, Lori?
I like it.
We added two to the football team. Three fifties.
Huh?
Three dollars and fifty cents.
Well, you can. You know more than I do.
We add two to the football team. Go out twenty-three and then mark. Who'd you add? Two with the line over encounter.
And who?
J S.
Oh, whose is this one over here?
Wait, 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 on camera.
What?
That's mine.
I looked over here. No, I got one. I had one. That's why I got confused.
Did I get it?
No. We have one out. I've had. I've had it off for three, four weeks now. I think, yeah.
Pass? Aim to me.
Okay.
Well, it's there. Perfect.
And I'm sure there's one to your left, but.
No, no, it's.
I'm catching up on it.
What's this?
If you believe that.
Yeah, we're both.
Special stuff. Or even disable apps like TikTok and Snapchat, all from the Blast Wi-Fi app. You can track where time is spent online and set time limits to create healthier habits. These device limits ensure work takes priority over gaming. Manage your home Wi-Fi and create balance for your family with Blast Wi-Fi powered by ITC.
Core Cares helps individuals stay at home by offering caregiving, nursing, and medical alert systems in over 55 communities in South Dakota. Specializing in tasks like bathing, meal prep, and medication setups, our well-trained staff delivers exceptional care. We invest in our team through customized training and comprehensive benefits. To learn more about job opportunities or services, visit our website at CoreCares.
Okay. Seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and call the meeting orders. Stan, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda as presented with one modification. We are going to remove item H as it is not needed. Thank you, Aaron. Second. Thank you, Larry. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Conflicts disclosure. None? Public communications? I would just like to take a minute to throw out two things. Thank you, Mr. Case, for putting out the notice as to the rules with the new playground. As we could remind everybody on Bearcat TV, this has been a very nice investment for the school. We need to keep dogs and animals off of the turf. It is not a dog park. There are dog parks within the city. Please use those. If you see somebody out there with dogs or animals and ignoring the rules, please ask them to leave politely, and if they won't, we do ask you to contact school authorities or other authorities because we want to keep this as a place that kids can play without issues with animals. Finally, the other thing I would like to bring up, I found out tonight that from Bearcat TV, the last two football games, there's been over, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wiley, a thousand views per game. That's pretty impressive, you know?
Must be the announcer.
Yeah. We might be able to double it if we can get a better announcer.
The announcer could be down a distance a little more often.
Well, we got Larry on there, we know. But a thousand views per game is really outstanding for our school district. Thank you for everybody that is watching it on Bearcat TV. Thank you to those that are involved with Bearcat TV, and this is just the public announcement that if you are interested in seeing this continue, we do need more help. We need more people besides just the standard bearers of Mike Wiley. We're really interested in finding people that can help run the camera or do a little bit of commentating. Those that have done it will tell you that the audience is quite forgiving. They're just happy to see somebody out there doing it. So thank you very much for what Bearcat TV is doing, and hopefully we can continue to grow this and continue to see those type of visits to Bearcat TV. Any other public communications? If not, motion to approve the minutes of our August 12 meeting. Thank you, Larry. Second. Thank you, Aaron. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the financial statements as presented. Thank you, Marty. Second. Thank you, Joel. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the claims as presented. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Marty, for the second. Discussion?
Just the ambulance bill is from last year. That's not a typo.
Okay. That's my question.
Yeah, I just received it, so. We should be getting another one last week at the end of the season.
It'll be at the end. Did we just receive this one?
Just got it.
The past years are.
Free.
Thank Christians and Ambulance for donating those years. A lot of years that were donated. Yeah.
Anything else as to claims?
Big month.
Big.
But a lot of that camp vault, I thought was offset by the grant money, right?
Well, yeah, some will be, but you know, we have a lot of that payment right then too, so we get these big payments, then it'll be recover for a couple, three months.
And the Shawan electric, is that for some of that stuff we were looking at earlier? Yes.
You know, the big thing is, I mean, a big month, but just for those of you on Bearcat TV that don't have what we have in front of us, Mammoth Sports Construction, the playground project is $221,000 bill. I think we're at, what, $480,000? Is that the number I thought I read in the paper?
For total cost?
For grants, oh, excuse me, donations.
Correct. Yeah, I think it's $480,002.
And our total cost is closer with the mammoth and then the.
Flooring.
Flooring. Close to six.
I would say six, yes.
So we're a little over.
Six.
Seventy-five, almost eighty percent of the entire project paid for with fundraising. Then we also have the virtual heavy equipment simulators. That's $125,000. That is being reimbursed by grants. And then we have the Anatomash table, $92,500. That is also being repaid for grants, just so you know what our big numbers are.
Everything has arrived.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything else as to claims? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the educational increases as presented within your packet. Thank you, Joel. Was that Aaron with the second? Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the contract of Jill Spindler as instrumental lesson coach. Thank you, Aaron. Second. Thank you, Larry. Discussion?
She is not here every day and it's partial days, but she is here.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the contract of Brianna Ridgway, special ed paraprofessional. Thank you, Joel. Second. Thank you, Marty. Discussion?
Brianna is filling the middle school special ed position where Jessica LaRueker was. Jessica, as you know, is in this position.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the Colonna's contract as, or the concession contract, Colonna's contract as presented within your packet. Thank you, Joel. Second. Thank you, Aaron. Discussion? Think this is the same contract that's been in existence for a couple decades. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the tax request to the Day County Auditor as presented within your packet. Thank you, Joel. Second. Thank you, Marty. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve open enrollment applications 25-07 through 25-09. Thank you, Aaron. Second. Thank you, Joel. Discussion?
This is a family that we've had. They're just moving outside of the district.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve change order number one from Mammoth Sports Construction.
So move.
Thanks, Joel. Second. Thank you, Marty. Chimney Christmas. We've only had one change order, guys, on a whole entire project. This one should be quick, and it's only for $1,072.50. What was it exactly that we did change again?
I think that one was for the idiot swing. I think that was concrete, correct? Do you remember, Marty?
Climbing wall.
It says on our back. I can't email up.
Or it could have been a climbing.
Additional concrete west side playground, climbing wall and regular stairs. One wall's $1,072.50.
Yeah.
Yeah, that climbing wall we had, they just helped us put it back in.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve our policy as to Title IX. This would be our second reading, I believe. Thank you, Larry. Second. Thank you, Marty. You guys tell me I keep me in the chimney. Oh, my gosh. All right, discussion.
So this is the second reading. This is a policy that was recommended by KSB Law. Craig and I both attended training in Aberdeen. We also had a discussion about this at our superintendent's meeting last Wednesday, and really the recommendation across the state, not just for KSB laws, that we need to be focusing on the 2024 regulations. There's a chance we may revert back to some of the 2020, but it's all going to depend on the election and things like that, so we're in line with what we're supposed to be in line with now with this particular policy.
At the NESC meeting, they said that the old rigs are, the old rigs are obsolete, correct? And they said the new ones have been challenged in court, but they're not sure.
Where it's going to go.
Right. This was as directed by.
KSB Law.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So does Robbie.
Yeah, Robbie's, he's in line with the head as well. He's just not developing the policies like this. He's more reviewing them versus developing.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the banking changes as presented within your packet. Thank you, Aaron. Second. Thank you very much. Nice one done. Larry, or Marty. That was intentional. All right. Lori?
Yes. So two changes here. I did put in a little explanation from Kelly Hansen regarding the ICS sweep. Basically, people have like a $20 bank charge each month, but it is going to generate us more interest monthly. And so I think his explanation was good. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. And then, secondly, the other thing is called positive pay, so this is, I need you guys to decide if this is something we should do or not. And Kelly also brought this to my attention. It's basically a fraud prevention. It costs $45 per month, and what would happen is I'm going to have to give them a listing of some sort of all of the check numbers, and then they will have them down there and they will be able to track them because he said, you know, like what they're seeing on their end, we haven't had it yet, knock on wood, what they're seeing on their end is, you know, things might end up in other people's hands and they deposit checks and then there's more recourse for us.
It's happened to us twice in the last month.
It has.
Do.
And so it is $45 a month, but on the other hand, if we end up losing a big check, so.
They don't, people, you know, and then they can use your check and forge their own. We don't know, but once it's cash, it's gone, gone. The money's gone. So this is just a way that they catch us that, or if it looks odd, or it looks like it's going somewhere where it's never been before, they'll call you down and they'll verify that check or something. Yeah.
Have you had it? Did you just have it happen with two checks or did you have this fraud protection in place yet?
We had it happen with two checks.
Okay.
So we, yeah. Does that delay anything at the bank?
What?
Does that delay anything at the bank with deposits, cash, or anything like that?
I would think so.
Okay, we all in favor of the fraud protection and the increase in interest? That's basically the motion we have in front of us. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go through them with both of them, Lori. Motion to approve change order number six from JDH Construction as to the CTE wing. Thank you, Larry. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Discussion?
Last one.
Last one?
So I didn't see, I just saw the, this isn't the last one, is it, Lori?
Change order?
No.
Claim? We don't have a claim in here. We should be, we should, we have one final claim coming.
Okay.
They didn't submit.
So I suppose they want approval for this to some, to know how to submit their final claim.
Here's that credit for the. That's all it is for the hoods.
So it's $5,000 per one credit?
Yep.
Yes.
I think it's a good, fair credit. I think that's fair, and I'm good with that. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, superintendent report, Dr. Block.
Okay, I've got just a few things here. We did have a superintendent's meeting last Wednesday. We had a speaker, Michael Rohr, from Children's Home Society at our meeting. This was basically to kind of start a conversation about the need that we might have for, Children's Home Society is like a, it's both a residential and a day, school day program in Sioux Falls. They also have one out in Rapid City. It's actually in some small town, Rockville or something like that in Rapid City. The difficulties they're having out west is the location and transportation. We're seeing a growing need for, I'm going to say behavioral management situations where some kids are better placed in a day program with a program like Children's Home Society or in some cases a residential. Well, our only option here in Webster is either Rapid City or Rockville or Missouri Falls. It's possible, and we had this discussion that maybe they can start a day program in Aberdeen and a day program in Watertown. They might have facilities to be able to do that, which would help the entire northeast part of the state to where kids who do need to be placed in something like, but it's their best placement, they can actually go their own and they're not sent to their place in a residential. So it was actually a good discussion. It went on a lot longer than what we planned because the more discussion we had, the more need we actually discussed. I think this is going to be a growing, a growing resource that we're going to want and will need. Heath Larson is the new director for the Associate School Board, so I'm not sure if you're aware of that. I don't recall the guy's name that was there before. He resigned after one year. I believe it was due to health issues, so Heath is new to the system. If you get an email regarding some of the regional meetings, you'd like to meet him, like hear what he's all about, see what their stance is on some of the legislative issues, I invite you to look into going to. I invite you to, to look into going to Abby, Watertown, or some of the areas that have those, most of those meetings. Do all of you get those emails or is it just you?
I did. I did.
You do get them, okay. Uh, we talked about Title Nine already. That was part of our discussion. The other thing that, uh, we discussed was the, uh, Initiative Measure Twenty-Eight, which is a sales tax initiative. That really has some, some concerns for us as educators because, uh, obviously the funding for education is local and state. The majority of it is state. The potential loss that is discussed at this particular meeting, and I don't know where they get their statistics. The potential loss could reach, uh, as much as six hundred million dollars annually, uh, in, in state revenue. When I say state revenue, I mean, could be revenue locally for, uh, municipalities, revenue for, the county's, uh, anything that you use sales tax for. The, the concern with this is not that it's tax relief because I would guess the majority of the population is gonna say, absolutely, I wanna vote for it. I'm on tax relief. I don't wanna pay taxes on food and things. There's a lot of definitions that are not yet determined as to what would be taxed, what wouldn't be taxed. But the biggest concern is, if you take, let's just say it's even half of what they're estimating, three hundred million dollars, and that revenue was gone, what replaces it? And if you don't have a replacement, then you either have a significant loss in resources, uh, and, and what it is we do and how we do it and how we know it is done. Everything from your county to your city, to your schools, to your ambulance, to whatever is any sort of a government entity. If that revenue is lost, you either have to make significant cuts in those areas or you have to find that revenue. And that other revenue in a different form would be a different tax. I mean, that's the reality. We look at other states and we say, oh, gosh, that's just wonderful that they don't have tax on these things. But they also have higher taxes in certain areas because they have lower taxes.
Stating.
The reality is, is the revenue has to be there in order to maintain how we know life as it is. The question is just how we do it. And so, all practical purposes, you've talked to Superintendent Association, the Associate School Boards, school administrators in South Dakota. We're not really supporting it, not in the sense that we don't wanna support local families and, and reduce their cost on, upon the things that it is to live off of. But it's, it could have a negative, negative impact on so many things across the state that we would have to probably find a different revenue. And finding a different revenue is basically going to be a different tax. Does that make sense?
It's probably a little something gross out there. Is this a recreational marijuana tax to make up the three hundred million?
Uh, be a lot of pot there.
I'm just saying.
Even I can do that math.
Be a lot of new tokers.
Alright, keep going.
Alright.
That went up in smoke.
The only other thing that I have here is, uh, homecoming was last week. It was a four-day week. We did have a couple of concerns regarding, uh, uh, the fact that we had coronation on a federal holiday. I don't really take a whole lot of clout with that argument because we have other federal holidays that we're actually in school and we're not recognizing those. We have plenty of other federal holidays where there are other activities. It might be a basketball game or a football game or something like that. So disappointing that some people are that upset about it, but, um, I, I really only had a couple of complaints. Weather wise, we looked pretty dang smart having it then. I would say having it the third day or third week of school is a bit early. But if you look at our calendar, I'm just justifying why we made the decision we made. You look at our calendar, we really had one choice and that was last week. All of the other weekends were weeks that were possibles for our, our three home games. One of those home games was a Saturday. We do all the parade and everything on Friday and they have a game on Saturday. I'm guessing some people break up. Maybe more than two. And then the others, the other Fridays that we had, uh, involved had no school. It would have been the week prior, which we didn't have school on September, well, it would have been August thirtieth. And then we also have in-service on our next home game. So in all honesty, it was our only option out of our four home games with the way our calendar was set up. I'm not in favor of us changing our in-service schedule when we go to our regional in-service so that we can have homecoming a different way. I think that's uncertain personally. We do enough, uh, scheduling around activities when it comes to academics and education. And I will fight that to the nth degree. So, um, I'm okay with the decision that we made. But I just wanted you to know that there were some complaints. Otherwise, it, it went very well. The, the beginning of this school year, I keep my fingers crossed because it's been a very smooth start to the school year. Things have just been going up and I, I pray that it continues that way. And anytime that we can get through the full homecoming week without a call Friday night in the middle of the night as to there was an accident or something like that, I think it's a success, a successful homecoming. When I wake up Saturday morning and there's not been any serious injuries, serious accident, or serious issue, uh, that is a successful homecoming. The next two things I wanted to mention is stuff that we already talked about in the claims. The anat- anat- now I can't say it, anatomage table or anatomage table. Uh, that arrived this morning. Um, it is absolutely unbelievable. I will give you a demonstration. I don't know when you wanna do that, but.
Right now, let's just go do it.
I would like to give you a demonstration on that. It's, it'll only take about ten minutes.
Let's go do it.
And then also, everything for the components of the simulators has arrived. That, that came this afternoon.
We'll be back.
About ten minutes.
I saw it today. Have all of you seen that?
Yeah.
We'll be back in ten. I'll have video.
I'm not even willing to hear it.
Ten.
Yeah. Last year with my family, eight man league, all of ours and our significant others, done. The last four in were all women. I only got one out, I mean, it is.
That's pretty cool.
That is crazy.
I want to see next month, those trainers, I want to be able to see what that is actually like.
Where did they have them go somewhere before? I've seen them, maybe it was a...
Oh, I mean, the AGC's got them, we've had them, they work with them in the trailer here.
That's where I'll see them go. Oh, we were getting the CTB stuff going on there.
Yeah. Anything else, Dr. Block?
That's it for me.
Alright, any questions for Dr. Block? Thank you. Mr. Case, principal report.
Mammoth had to come back from the playground just for some minor issues. They upgraded the mound, the top of the mound was coming up a little bit. They just restructured, put new turf on there, and then put a stronger glue on there. We also had a couple areas coming up by the mound, and then on the carousel, it was pulling away from the carousel. All the kids going around it. So they just put, they lengthened the nailer board down there, so it had more adherence. So you get the screws through there, and hopefully the reinforcement of that is much better. So so far it looks good, the reinforcements look good. Otherwise, the rest of the playground and the turf, it's looking really good, and the kids enjoy it a lot. Flooring, I just got a call today, they're pushing that back for next week. So they're trying to finish up on those other jobs. They were hoping to come in at the end of this week. So flooring should start hopefully sometime on Monday, if not Monday, it'd be Tuesday. And they will hope to finish that week with vinyl floor in the elementary gym. They'll do our gym first, and then Roslyn next. Is that your question, Bill?
Yep.
February 20th is the field trip for fifth grade. They, again, will be included in the Starbase program, which has been an ongoing program that we've had for many years now. So their field trip, they get to go down to the airbase down there, which is a very nice field trip for them. I know Mr. Wiley has driven the bus on that, and has enjoyed it, and I told Dr. Block he should be driving the bus next year. It's a good experience for those kids. On the 26th, we have a whole bunch of Germans in town, and they are bringing their band. And they will be playing for us at the school. So they'll be playing for grades three and up, and then grades nine and 12. So we're looking forward to hearing what their good music that they have. And they will be playing a lot of other places in town too, including our German Fest at...
Is that September 26th?
Correct. And then September 27th, we have in-service, and we will be, actually, it'll be a crisis intervention planning. We've had training on that in 2020, I do believe.
Twenty or twenty-one?
It's been a few years. So what it is, is just de-escalating skills that they will teach us. And they're coming, Tim Fruing from the co-op is coming up and teaching our staff on that. So they'll do a refresher in the morning for all the staff. And then in the afternoon, they'll do a hands-on training with the specialized staff and all of the pairs that we have. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Case? Thank you, Mr. Case. N E S C?
As of the last meeting, there was all staff positions were filled except there was a pair that had resigned the week last year. So I haven't heard anything. So I called her this morning, and they said that they offered a contract to somebody, so that's filled in. And I said there's actually a need for a second position, so they opened up another one, and they offered a contract on that as well. They were offering eight, so I'm not sure if, it sounds like they're not going to take the positions. We already talked about Title IX, and then from the director, she gave her report. During their in-service, they did medication training down there. Castlewood Nurse came in, talked to all the people about different medications, administering medications where it came in, things like that. They also did CPI training, which is Crisis Prevention Institute. It's basically, it was for their pairs, is all they did it for. And next year, they're hoping to do it for the co-op line. And it's just for any emergency situations on the line for their programs.
Okay. Anything else for N E S C? Buildings and grounds.
I really don't have a whole lot to update you on. Schwan Electric, you've seen some of the claims, they've worked on some things, they'll continue to work on. We have shared a summary of what they've already done with our insurance company. I think that's been received well. I'm not saying it's done, obviously, but received well. We'll continue to look into the cost effectiveness of what we need to update down in the fifties wing. My stance on it is, I think I said this last month, we have the lights, the lead humidifiers, and the unit that takes care of the air circulation in the restroom. All else can be powered down. I don't know if there's anything else down there. If we have those three things working, that is what we need to utilize that facility. Now, that could cause some issues with lighting and things like that, with the weight room, locker rooms, things like that. But I'm looking at the bare necessities of what we need in that facility for it. That's going to be kind of my stance on it as they move forward. And they ask me questions about, well, do you want this done, or do you want that done? Unless you guys provide me some different direction than that.
Are they able to shut the water off, so it's not going out there? If you don't heat it, is it going to be, for all the shops and the bathrooms?
Right now, our plan is to still start up the boiler, because we have too much water infrastructure in that facility to let it just freeze. And so we may only heat that fifties wing at, you know, forty degrees, forty-five degrees. But we still have to fire up the boiler to do that, unfortunately.
But we gotta have the boiler to heat the restroom.
Yes.
So... So we could be spending thousands of dollars a month to heat that building up to forty degrees too. Depending on what happens with the boiler.
Lori's not aware of this, but, and I don't know which boiler they're coming for, but I just received a call today. Boiler inspection is tomorrow, so...
But who's doing that? Because the state's already been here.
It's somebody that already knows that there's one item that we need to follow up on. I just had messages, I wasn't able to talk to anybody in person. So they said that they normally talk to you.
So with that boiler, you can't shut off sections in the school? It's just all or none?
No, we could, I believe we can shut off lines, the steam lines. I don't know that for sure, but I believe we can.
I think Travis said we have to keep a little heat.
Yep.
We have to keep some little heat through that wing.
The whole system to function?
Yeah, I asked him that.
That was my understanding.
Yeah. I thought we could just cut the pipes off.
I'm just guessing there's not a simple solution. I'm just, I don't know much about this steam system.
Right, you know, bottom line is, Jim, is that, you know, this is a tough issue. And last month, I really appreciated everybody that showed up to the board meeting to discuss it, and their passion for it. I heard a lot of discussion about it within the community. But it is something that has to be fixed, you know? That high school gym has been there since the nineteen...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-seven.
We've known this issue's been here, as I think Joel said, for the last five years. And unfortunately, I think there's going to have to be some growing pains. And I hope everybody can work together, because it's not about trying to penalize anybody, or trying to punish anybody. It's about trying to make what's best for the school district for the long term. And I hope that group does keep working and taking information from the community. And they gotta keep going, because it's not something that can just wait two, three years. I mean, the time is coming. We will be putting out for bids the demolition of that side of the building here.
I did a little measure over there, and when that's moved down, the old restroom, there's about twenty-five thousand square feet there that could be utilized.
So that's what the group, that group needs to keep working. Okay? Anything else, buildings and grounds?
I have one thing. Just want to verify with you all, for insurance purposes, extra insurance for the playground turf equipment would be approximately $2,000 on top of our premium.
Yep.
Just so you're all aware of that?
It is what it is. I don't think we have much of a choice. We only have one insurance company. I should have less broken windows.
Yep. Is it because of the value of the playground that the premium? Because actually, their...
You know what? I wonder if that shouldn't be us.
Their exposure should be down.
Because it's for the turf and the playground equipment, well, her estimate is $420,000. Well, that $420,000 is labor and everything. Now, we need to redo that figure.
You said liability should be...
We already have liability.
Yeah, that should be...
This is just for if the tornado came through, or...
Yeah, we should relook at that.
You know, like we have for the grandstand, and, okay, we need to re-figure that home.
Okay. Anything else, buildings and grounds? First reading, activity and practice limits revision.
So I provided a copy of the revisions that I'm proposing. This is kind of coming from, kind of, it is coming from our focus on our middle school athletic programs. In the process of reviewing what we do and what everybody else does, we have learned that we are the only NEC school that does not have practices on Wednesday afternoons. Now, obviously, every school is limiting practices on Wednesday evenings. We should be done with practice between 5:30 and 6:00, and they don't do anything on Sundays unless we have special circumstances. And that, I'm going to say this, that includes Ron Colly. Generally, when you're talking about a Christian school, you would expect that maybe they would have limitations with practices on that in the afternoons. But what's been reported to me is that they do all of their church activities in the evening for middle school. And high school students thus allowing that afternoon practice to occur. I believe that from what I can gather, we're looking at about three churches in multiple communities within our district. And when I say multiple communities, probably even includes Eden, which is not in our district. But we have students that are currently doing activities for church in the afternoon. Do I justify that? I just think that the times have changed. I think we still should and will recognize the time in the evenings on Wednesdays for the middle school, high school students to do their church activities. That's my proposal. I just, I believe it's falling in line with what everybody else is doing. I personally don't believe that it's, we're thinking less of God, or less of religion. We're just limiting it by a few hours of what we were currently doing. And when you look at percentages of students that were participating, it was a very, very minor amount, a small amount of students that was affecting. One thing that I would say to that is, when we, when we put them in that position where they have to choose, parents are not happy because they have to choose. Or be the parents that are going to say, you will go to church, and go to the center of the class about it. Or those students who are put in that position. I don't like them to be put in that position, and I think we're going to find more often that that will happen than not. And so I just think that it's, the time is done, and that's what we need to do. I can't say I agree with it 100%, but I just believe that that's what we need to do at this time.
Any questions?
Does it, I mean, I just feel like you're singling out students of faith by changing that policy, if it doesn't affect anyone else. So is that an issue of you're affecting just one group of kids? Versus if you change, if you have practice in the mornings? Or, because that way, it's not, you're not picking out a certain group of kids. If people can't attend that because they can't get there, that's different than, I can't go to practice because I'm in a class, religious class.
Two things that I would say to that is, you're probably going to have more, life is about convenience. I mean, we just live in a world of convenience. And if we inconvenience children, and we inconvenience moms and dads, something's wrong with our system. I don't believe that there's something wrong with our system, it's just people don't accept inconvenience that well. I believe we would have a lot more issues if we moved to the morning practice, simply because the kids ride the bus. If they ride the bus, they're here, they stay, mom and dad finish work, they come get them. It's still pretty convenient if you're doing a practice after school. Versus, we gotta bring everybody in. The other argument that I would say is, you know, we're setting this up for, the way the system is set up right now is for Christians. Not everybody's a Christian within our school system. So those people might come forward and say, well, I don't like your argument because you're already isolating those. For something to benefit. I'm playing devil's advocate there, and so I'm just, the argument can go different ways on every single one of these. And maybe devil's advocate's not cool for H T U's in this situation.
Any other comments?
Well, also, and then from the kids' standpoint, you know, they're missing 20, 30% of their practices now. If they're going to attend that religious class versus practice. It's not mandatory to be in practice, but when you tell a kid it's not mandatory to be here, how do they perceive that? And yeah, they're going to resent the parents, because the parents are making those religious classes versus practice.
This obviously is a tough subject, and, you know, I have, I'm sure everybody here's been hit up with the community about it or not. Hit up, but just, I find that I get more comments saying, why aren't we having practice on Wednesdays? Versus the couple that we've had this fall. And what I like about this is, and what I've been telling most parents, is why can't the... And what I like about this is, and what I've been telling most parents, is why can't the ministerial association kind of get together and have a time when they all do their classes and the things at the church? Just like the school asks you, so either we're taking a leave here by trying to set up a time. You know, we're going to be here. You guys have, you know, have a five period.
But they have had that for how many years?
Well...
I mean, it's been a tradition for how long? I mean, when I was in school, we actually had our religious classes, the first class of the day in school. I mean, that would make people's heads explode.
Right.
But by this time?
Yeah. But I mean, otherwise, it's been right after school ever since.
Well, but no, then you'd still have practices Wednesday afternoons. I mean, you could have junior high kids doing stuff Wednesday afternoons, like back then.
If you had it during the day.
One of the changes that we had is the sports for middle school used to be during the day so they could do their church activities after school. So it was never a conflict. That has, that conflict has existed for what? It was about 2008, 2009. We moved the middle school outside of the school day, the middle school sports. It hasn't been a real, real long time. It's been about a decade, decade and a half. And we did that not because we wanted to cause that conflict, but because we wanted to utilize our teachers to teach classes, not coach sports during the school day. And part of that's driven by the size of the staff that we used to have. I mean, if you go back to the 90s, we were pretty much a three section. You had three social studies teachers, three math teachers, three English teachers, three, 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 three. We get down to two and then that really, really limits what you can offer for high school courses and some middle school courses when, you know, a third of your high school teachers are coaching last block. They can't, and even if they coach one quarter, like they coached, let's say they coached junior high volleyball. Well, that ties them up for the whole semester because there's not a half credit class that you're going to offer. It just doesn't work. I was very, very, I mean, I drug my toes when we moved that outside of the day because it was, it worked well with our gym space and our coaches. We had some coaches that could do both junior high and high school. It pretty much made it work.
Jim, I think that was in 2012.
But it was, it was a good move. I didn't agree with it at the time. Didn't like it all, but it really was a good move.
I think it was in 2012 when we did that. Because of having the teachers teach, we needed them in the classroom.
It wasn't an easy thing to change, but, and I don't think this is an easy thing to change. I'm not trying to minimize the significance of this change. I just believe that it's probably where we should go and still focus on, let's covet that time in the evenings on Wednesdays and Sundays.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Motion to move into executive session for short personnel issue. Thank you, Joel. Second, was that you, Aaron, Eric?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next meeting is October 14th. Is there any events ongoing on the 14th? Junior high games or anything like that?
Football, JV at Duell.
Aaron, you, Aaron, would you rather do it at seven then?
What was that, Joel?
My thing shows JV football at Duell.
No, that's fine. I'm okay with the seven if I need to.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's nothing on the seven.
Oh, no, I mean, on the 14th, we could just, but just do it at seven versus...
It's a holiday.
It is a holiday.
The 14th, it's Native American Day.
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day.
What time is this?
We do.
It just says five to midnight.
Well, you wouldn't, you don't...
Is it junior high or JV or both?
There'd be both, but they're not going to keep all the JV games because they'll lack the kids. So I don't know if they are going to go or not. Duell is a four o'clock start.
You're going to five.
Yeah, six. Let's just go seven, just to make it easy for you back here.
You okay with that, Larry? Yep. We'll go seven on the 14th.
There's also volleyball.
Oh, I'm out. Do you want to do it October 7th? Move it up, we... I think it'll be gone. That's all right.
Boys, junior high, football.
Four thirty start at home.
Yep.
At home?
Yep.
We can do that still. We can just say it's seven though on that if you want to. Larry, you okay with us going on the 7th? If we need you, you call in on that one then? Seventh it is, at seven.
Larry, you won't be here?
I don't think so.
60% chance. I don't, I gotta see. I gotta fight that.
Okay.
But keep it there. Just know that, I mean, I don't...
Because then we would have, everything would have to be unanimous. Three we can do. I'll tell you what, why don't we go with the seventh at seven? And if we have any issue that's popping up, then we can revisit here as we come in closer.
We want to get the 14th, does it work?
14th morning? Yeah, I can make the morning work 14th. Aaron? Already no?
I'm just wondering.
There'll be one on every, every one of them.
It's harder dates.
Yeah. And you can't be here on the 14th.
The 7th, right?
Yeah, I don't, right, we're back. Okay. Which one do you guys want? So what do you guys want to do? I'd say right now, let's do... Four. All right. So we're back to the 14th now. See how many Christmas. What time on the 14th?
6:30. I don't see that.
We're delighted.
What time do you prefer in the morning?
I'm wide open. I don't care.
Lori, what time?
I don't care. I'll be here.
Uh huh. Okay. So do we want, Jim, Marty, can you do it if we start a little earlier or are you going on?
I'm with God.
You're going to be gone?
Maybe. I don't think so.
7:30? Marty, is that a good time?
Seven.
Seven?
We usually don't have a heavy agenda in October.
Okay. Seven? The 14th at 7:00 AM, we're not changing it anymore. At least for the next five minutes.
That's the longest topic.
Well, boy, mercy sakes. All right. All right. All in favor of moving to an executive session for personnel, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Should we just go into another room down there so that way Mike's got time to wrap things up? We can just go right to the gym.